I call to order this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education.
No doubt.
We do have all members here, and I declare quorum. At this time, I'm going to call on our student representative, Mr. Chris Mackley, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Chris?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think we'll have approval of this evening's agenda.
Is there approval?
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Second? Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda, seven to zero, student member concurs. We'll move on to approval of the minutes.
Madam President, I move for approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, August 7, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Are there any additions or corrections to that set of minutes? Okay, all those in favor of approval of the minutes of the closed session held on August 7, please raise your hand. Okay, that's four. And those abstaining? Okay, so Fisher, Gessford, and Stauffer abstaining. And, Mr. Bickford, back to you.
Madam President, I move for the approval of the second closed session minutes dated Tuesday, August 7, 2018.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Any additions or corrections to the second set of closed session minutes dated August 7? All those in favor? Okay, those abstaining? That's Mr. Ridenhour, Mrs. Fisher, and Mr. Stauffer abstaining. Okay.
Madam President, I move for approval of the business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, August 7, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any additions or corrections to the closed meeting minutes of August 21? Business meeting? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was... And what is the... I'm sorry, Mr. Bickford.
The business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, August 7, 2018.
Okay, thank you, I'm ahead of myself. Any additions or corrections to the business meeting minutes of August 7? Okay, all those in favor of approval of the business meeting minutes of August 7? Two, three, four, and the student member concurs abstaining, Mr. Ridenhour, Mrs. Fisher, and Mr. Stauffer.
Madam President, I move for the approval of closed session minutes dated Tuesday, August 21, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any additions or corrections to the minutes of the closed meeting held on August 21? Okay, then the vote is on approval of the closed session minutes for August 21. Okay, two, three, four, five, and the student member concurs. Those abstaining?
One.
One, two. Ridenhour and Murray abstaining. Okay, thank you, Mr. Bickford.
Madam President, I move for the approval of the business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, August 21, 2018.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Any additions or corrections to the business meeting minutes of August 21? Okay, vote is on approval of the business meeting minutes for August 21. Five, and they're abstaining. Murray, Ridenhour, and Mr. Mackley. Okay.
Okay, that's it.
I think that does it. Thank you. Let's all have public comment. And before, we do have an individual who has signed up in advance for public comment. Before I call the gentleman up to the table, I'd like to read from policy KD, Section 3A1, under Procedures of Business Meetings. Each person wishing to address the Board of Education is encouraged but not required to sign up prior to the meeting and may address any topic concerning Washington County Public Schools except personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals. Each speaker may speak for up to five minutes. And, Mr. Bickford, are you prepared to be our timekeeper?
Sure.
Okay, so we have a...
Thirty seconds left, we'll hold that up. And then when your time is up, please wrap up your sentence.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I'd like to call Mr. Doug Smith forward.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the board tonight. I'm not sure if the agenda notes that I'm the leader of the Boonsborough High School Drama Boosters Organization. Fairly loose group that we put together basically to help Mr. Baer try to pull off the graduate efforts he does every year. We kind of formed after his latest heart incident. And basically, talking to his wife, she said, you know, one more and he's retired. And I said, okay, then he needs to do less, at least until his kids are out. So I wanted to address the board to make sure. And I know that some of you probably are aware, Boonsborough High School Drama Department was originally nominated by local theater groups and then selected by an international theater festival in Scotland called the Edinburgh Folk Festival and particularly the American or the Edinburgh Fringe Festival. Part of the American Theater Group that performs there every year. It's a very prestigious honor. We're very honored to have been selected. That is, the students and Mr. Baer. But one of the reasons I wanted to thank the board first, because part of the criteria is how much support you have within your organization. And that certainly speaks to Dr. Hamilton, but obviously it speaks to you all as well. And we really do appreciate the efforts you have made to support Mr. Baer, support the program, support Dr. Hamilton and our efforts. This effort, of course, is not something that comes with a scholarship. It's something we're going to have to fundraise for. And our current budget, we met about this as a boosters group with Mr. Baer and his Student Steering Committee last week, we... The number we're shooting for is to take 15 students. We want to take it, we want to be able to fund their entire trip. Because originally, when we started talking about this, the estimates we have for the cost for each student will be about $6,500. Our first thought was we wanted the students to raise half of that for themselves. And then Mr. Baer saw a number of students, good students, maybe they're not the most talented, maybe they're not the talented, the least talented. That wasn't his factor, but he saw a lot of brows just go down. Because there's no way that student was going to be able to make that kind of fundraising effort personally. So we have kind of refocused our efforts. And while we're not throwing away that idea, in fact, Mr. Baer and I both concur, having student investment in themselves is very important. And we want to encourage that, and we certainly will be. But if we can, we're trying to fund it completely for the students. I'm not here to ask for funds, although if you offer them, we'll certainly take them. What I'm here is just offering, asking for that continued support that you've already shown us in helping us get our message out. We're discussing a number of different fundraising efforts. We're planning, the school usually does four shows per year. We're going to try to make our costs just as low as possible so that the... We can use the funds generated through ticket sales as our fundraising. Of course, we have to take our costs out of that as well for the individual shows. We're also planning at least some additional shows, maybe some that are alumni-directed. One of the things I love about Mr. Baer's program reminds me very much of the programs I've been in as a high school and college student, is that he has continuing alumni involvement in his program. And we were thinking that we might tap some of that alumni skill and alumni talent to direct shows so that we're not burdening Mr. Baer, we're not burdening the school. Because again, we understand those resources are very precious. So we're looking at some community resources for venues. And so if there's any groups like that that you're involved with or know of that might be able to help support us, we'd love to hear from them. I know that Mr. Baer has received a number of forms we need to fill out to get the approvals done. We're certainly going to be getting on those promptly so that the... We can make sure that we are ready to go, that the... That there's no hindrances in terms of board policy or school policy before we really get these efforts in gear. But the last item I would ask, if there's... This just kind of came up during our discussion. We had a lot of, we thought, good ideas on fundraising. And a couple of people said, you know what? I know somebody who's really good at this. And I would just ask, if you know somebody that's really good at fundraising, please send them our way. Again, we're not looking for them to pull the rowing mower, we're just looking for ideas at this point. We have a lot of energy, we have a lot of alumni, parent, and student involvement. In fact, I think this year we have 90... Well, for this semester, we have 60 first... We have 60 Drama Ones, and we're getting 30 Drama Ones next semester. This is a very popular program. We're really hoping to get as much of their energy and support behind us as well. So that was really my comment for the board tonight. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Is there any other questions that we would like to ask?
We will have board member response to public comment next. And so, Mr. Bickford, if you have a question.
When did you say the festival was again?
They'll be leaving July 27. I believe they get back August 9 of 2019.
Got it, okay.
They, I think, spent two days in London and then a week in Scotland, and then the return trip.
Got it. And did you say the amount they'd have to raise for each student?
It's $6,500.
For each student?
Yeah, that's our estimate. That may go down if we have more people going. For instance, we're offering this as a... We're not paying their way, but if alumni or parents want to go, and obviously we'll be asking some parents to go, to chaperone. But the more people we have going, the... It'll reduce our rate as well.
Got it, okay.
Who else? Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you again.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Mr. Becker.
Sorry, I didn't sign up ahead of time. I left my phone at the office, had to go back and get it. And then I forgot it after I picked something else up. So I got my glasses, I got my phone, and I have my notes. But good evening, happy school year. It's a great start to the year. I see, I didn't dress in purple, but I'm wearing red for Ed tonight in solidarity with our Arizona teachers who are facing a crippling funding shortage statewide. I'm hopeful that Maryland never faces a shortage that some of our neighboring states are dealing with at this time. I extend to all Washington County Public Schools employees my sincerest wishes for a successful school year, as I do for our Board of Ed. Our student success would not be possible without the committed employees, all of our employees, our educators, our support staff, our administrators, who are dedicated to safe, secure, positive learning environments. We are very fortunate in our system to be blessed with employees who really care about what they do. My year is off to a great start. I know it's only day one. This morning, I was lucky enough to greet some of our youngest learners at Ruth A. Monroe Primary School. It's fun. If you ever get the invitation from Mrs. Forrest, jump on board. Working with those little ones as they're getting off the bus, some for the very first time, it's an amazing opportunity. And it truly is one of my funnest experiences as an educator. It's a fun way to start the day, it's a fun way to start the school year, and it keeps me grounded, it reminds me why we do what we do. So thank you to Kathy Forrest and the staff for the opportunity to participate. I also thank Joni Burkhardt. Joni and her colleagues warmly welcome the Washington County Public Schools' new teachers, our new hires. They're not all brand new, as Dr. Michael included at our last board meetings, but our new hires are what we need as an addition to start our year off and our learning careers for our students. I'm confident that the new staff in Washington County started their year off on the right foot with the work of Mrs. Burkhardt and the staff. The newly hired educators are prepared to embark on a positive learning journey for their students and a professional journey for themselves. And as the testing data indicates, great things truly are happening in Washington County Public Schools. I'm confident that the positive trend will continue. We're in a good place, we're doing good things, and that positive trend will continue, not just with testing data. Our educators are teaching the whole child. They're encouraging students to take risks, to learn from one another, to grow as citizens. Many educators are embracing the tenets of restorative practices in order to reach children in their families and their communities. Carlos Malat, the MSA Uniserve Director working with Washington County, has secured opportunities for educators and community members to participate in trainings related to restorative practices. Washington County's own Jeff Farr is not just a practitioner of restorative practices, but he's also a trainer. And Mr. Farr and others will be offering restorative practices primers throughout the school year. The first is scheduled for Thursday, September 20, at the WCTA office. All educators, community members are invited to participate. Board of Education members are invited to participate. Reach out to Carlos or me to reserve a spot. And finally, I thank you again for the opportunity to address the board. I invite you to reach out to me at any time during the school year, days, nights, evenings, and we can discuss how to better serve our students and continue to positive movement. Our students deserve the best public... Excuse me, public education one can imagine, and we have the power to make that happen. So again, best wishes for a great school year. Thank you for the opportunity to address you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward during public comment? Okay, board members, if anyone else would like to respond to anything Mr. Smith and Mr. Becker had to say? Okay, then, we have no old business this evening, so we'll move on to new business. Our first item is the consent agenda. Mr. Bechtel, our Supervisor of Purchasing, good evening.
Good evening, President Williams, board members, Dr. Michael. Tonight, I have four items for your review. These items were reviewed by our Purchasing Review Committee and are being recommended for approval. And staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the awards renewals and procurements for Juniper Support Three-Year Renewal to Skyline Technology at a cost of $283,009.78. Boonsborough Elementary School Replacement Cabling Installation to High Performance Cabling Corp. at a cost of $40,653.61. DBQ Online Digital Curriculum Platform Renewal to the DBQ Company at a three-year total price of $67,893. And Electronic Reading Inventory, ERI, testing from Houghton-Mifflin-Harcourt at a total cost of $115,550.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Any questions for Mr. Bechtel or any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the vote. The vote is for Mr. Bickford's motion on the acceptance of this evening's consent agenda as presented. All those in favor? Seven, zero, student member concurs. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item is fourth quarter FY 2018 budget adjustments with Mr. David Brandenburg, Executive Director of Finance. Good afternoon, not afternoon anymore, it's a evening.
Good evening, yes, good evening. President Williams and Vice President, Staff Members of the Board, and Dr. Michael. As you know, on a quarterly basis, we bring the adjustments to you for the budget. The adjustments at the year-end represent what we need to align the budget with the actual results, since MSD regulations require no category may be overspent or underspent after final adjustments. So these adjustments were reviewed by the Finance Committee with approval to bring them forward to you tonight. The adjustments this quarter reflect additional revenues, realized savings in some areas, and how those savings were redeployed to achieve a small net increase in fund balance of $281,648. Following the Commissioner approval, we'll ask you to designate that amount towards a cost of security vestibules. Several category vacancies, as you can see on the document enclosed, deal with the data recovery, synergy data recovery. The savings in the top portion of the document were redirected to the lower section, savings primarily from the additional revenue, and the savings in fixed charges expended primarily for instructional materials and items related to the safety and operation of the schools. Upon your approval of these adjustments, we will present these category transfers to the county commissioners. And at this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have about the board's finances or the budget adjustment document before you.
Thank you, Mr. Brandenburg. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the proposed FY 2018 fourth-quarter budget adjustments as presented and subsequent to the approval of the fourth-quarter adjustments by the Board of County Commissioners to designate the year-end fund balance of $281,648 to designated fund balance for the purpose of completing the construction of school security vestibules.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Questions for Mr. Brandenburg or any discussion? Mr. Ridenhour?
It has nothing to do with this statement. But have we put out an RFP for the... We were going to do an audit on the issue with the...
Technology.
Technology.
Yep.
Or if you come out. I may have missed it, so, okay, thank you.
Jeff, do you have a word for this? I'm going to share.
I'd have to look for the exact date, but I believe you approved the award of that contract, I think, the first meeting in August. So that's already come before you for approval.
It may have been a meeting that Mr. Ridenhour wasn't there.
May have been.
But we put out an RFP, and I think we had several companies that bid on the process, and we've selected a company.
Okay, I'll look at it. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Any further discussion? Or any discussion? I haven't had any discussion to have further discussion. Okay, then we'll move to the vote. The motion is to approve the proposed FY 2018 fourth-quarter budget adjustments as presented and subsequent to the approval of the fourth-quarter adjustments by the Board of County Commissioners to designate the end... The year-end fund balance of $281,648 to designated fund balance for the purpose of completing the construction of school security vestibules. All those in favor? Okay, seven to zero, and the student member concurs. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My next agenda item is the first reading of proposed policy JLIG entitled "Student Sunscreen Use." Mr. Trotter?
Good evening.
Good evening.
During the most recent session of the Maryland General Assembly, they enacted a new law, House Bill 427, entitled "Public Schools' Student Sunscreen Use Policy." This law requires local boards of education across the state of Maryland to adopt a policy which must allow students to use and possess sunscreen with school property and at school-sponsored events. The law also requires local boards of education to encourage public schools to educate students about sun safety measures. Staff presented the policy committee with a proposed policy to meet the requirements of this new law at its public meeting on July 24 and August 28. The new policy will be entitled "Student Sunscreen Use," and the policy makes specific reference to a fact sheet issued by the Centers for Disease Control that addresses sun safety tips. The policy committee is requesting... The policy committee is requesting the Board of Education to approve the first reading of this new policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move for the approval of the first reading of proposed policy JLI-G entitled "Student Sunscreen Use."
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Staffer. Any questions for Mr. Trotta or Mrs. Fisher, Committee Chair, or any discussion of the Okay, then we'll move to the vote. The move is to approve the first reading of proposed policy JLI-G entitled "Student Sunscreen Use." All those in favor? Seven to zero, student member concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. And we'll move on then from new business to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Michael?
I just want to respond to Mr. Reddner's question. August 7, Information Technology Assessment was awarded to Securants Consulting for $41,192. And their task is to provide risk and gap analysis, backup and recovery analysis, policy procedures, data storage, existing equipment, software. So that work should be underway here soon. Want to welcome everybody back to the new school year. I had the opportunity to spend a lot of time in schools today, and we were up and running, instruction was taking place, students, every class, I had the opportunity to ask, were they excited to be back? They all smiled and said they were. Primarily, that was in elementary. I hope that was true of secondary schools as well. So very excited to have the new school year back. Really appreciate the efforts of our ESP administrators and teachers to prepare for this first day and make it a successful first day. So pleased to report that and to thank staff for all the work it takes to get the school year open. So at this time, I'm going to call on staff if they would share our 2017-18 Park results. Looks like they brought quite a few people that can respond to questions. So if the board has any questions about anything specific that Dr. Pugh or Maureen can answer or want to share the podium with somebody else, I'm sure we have somebody that can answer.
President Williams, Dr. Michael, members of the board, I am pleased to share with you student achievement data. It's the Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program, MCAP. This is going to be the new overarching assessment system, and this is the English and math section for MCAP this year. So we'll start with grade three. The assessments, both ELA and math, are divided into five performance levels, beginning at the bottom in the red is students that have, the percentage of students that have not yet met expectations. Moving to the orange, students that have partially met expectations. The yellow, performance level three, students who have approached expectations. In green, the percentage of students who have met expectations. And then in blue, the students who have exceeded expectations. The green, the green bubbles are the number, the percent of students who have met or exceeded expectations, which for the state is the proficiency level. So for grade three ELA, 36.9% of our students met or exceeded expectations. This compares to the Maryland average of 38.9%. The light green arrows indicate an all-time high value for Washington County. We had an all-time high of the number of students at performance level five, 3.4% of our students. We also had an all-time high for the number of students that were proficient at 36.9%. For math, the number of students who met or exceeded expectations was 35.8. That compares to the Maryland average of 42.2%. Again, an all-time high of 7.8 at our highest level. 35.8 was also an all-time high for number of students, for the percent of students who were proficient. For grade four ELA, the number of students that were proficient were 41.5%. This compares to the Maryland average of 43.1%. An all-time high again for our highest level, 10.3% of our students, and an all-time high for the number who are proficient. For math in 2018, we had 39.5% of our students proficient. This compares to the Maryland average of 38.8. Another all-time high, 4.3 at our highest level, as also with the proficiency rate of For grade five, 40.8% of our students demonstrated proficiency, all-time high of 3.7% at level five, also an all-time high for proficiency rate. For 2018, grade five math, 33.9% of our students were proficient. One more all-time high for our number of students at level five, 5.4%, as well as an all-time high for 33.9%. For grade six?
Just sort of mentioned state.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. For grade, grade five, the state was 42.2% for ELA. For grade five math, it was 38.0%. For grade six, 40.0% were proficient. This compares to the Maryland average of 38.7%, an all-time high at 7.3% of our students at level five, as well as an all-time high for proficiency rate. For grade six math, we had 35.4% of our students, compares to the Maryland average of 31.8%. All-time highs in the level five at 5.2, and proficiency at 35.4. For grade seven, 51.9% of our students were at or meeting or exceeding expectations, compares to a Maryland average of 45.6%. All-time high here of 18.2% of our students scoring at level five, and an all-time high for our proficiency rate. 45.6. For grade seven math, 40.3% of our students proficient. This compares to the Maryland average of 28.6. 5.7% of our students at level five, all-time high, as well as our proficiency rate. For grade eight, 46.1% of our students were proficient. This compares to a Maryland average of 41.3%, 10.8, again, an all-time high for at level five, and for proficiency rate. For grade eight, this represents our students that are taking only the Math 8 assessment. This does not include our students who are taking the Algebra I in eighth grade. So that's about 60.3% of our students are participating in this. We had no students at level five, but we did have an all-time high at 14.6% of our students at level four, which is almost a doubling. This compares to the Maryland number of 15.9%. For high school, a slightly more complicated view. So again, we have the proficiency. So we have 46.6% of our students scoring proficient on ELA 10 this year. In 2017 was the first year that we implemented a minimum passing score, so this is a level three or above. So students who meet level three, 67.5% of our students, would have met the graduation requirement even though they did not meet that level four proficiency. So since 2017 was a minimum passing score, any of those students who did not meet the graduation requirement in 2017 may need to go back and retake the assessment in 2018. So you can see for 2018, we have 46.6% of our students proficient, and 65.7% of our students met the graduation requirement. We did have an all-time high of 16.1% of our students in the level five. The number of retakers that we had was 420. So what we did was we removed those students, so you could compare 2017 to 2018, so it would be first-time test takers. So you can see at this, comparing the two together, we have 56.8% of our first-time test takers proficient, and we have 76.0% of our first-time test takers meeting the graduation requirement in 2018. For Algebra I, now this includes our middle school students who took the Algebra I in eighth grade. So we have 37.9% of our students that are proficient. It is the same model as it is for ELA 10. In 2017, the minimum passing score was level three and above, so we had 63.2% of our students taking in 2017 and passing, meeting that graduation requirement. And 64.7% of our Algebra I students, and this is all students, including students who were taking those 37% that were retaking the assessment for the second time. So with that, we did have an all-time high in our level five in Algebra I and in our proficiency rate. So we had 570 students, oh, sorry, Maryland was 31.1% proficient in Algebra I. We had 570 students retake the exam, and so when we remove those, we look at Algebra I first-time test takers. You can see that we had 49.1% of our students that were proficient, and we had 74.9% of our students that were past, meeting the graduation requirement. For our middle school, we had a nice bump from them. 97.4% of our students in middle school who took the assessment met the proficiency. We also break this out by grades three through eight and ELA 10, so these are the students that are participating in required assessments. We looked at students who, student achievement based on their identified rate, on their identified race. For all of these, we made improvements from the 2017 proficiency rates, and again, it's the same levels. For math in grade three through eight and Algebra I, we also made improvements from 2017 for achievement for student with their identified race. For students that have a special, that are in a special group, these would include students who are in the, under the protection of the Americans with Disabilities Act, students who would have a 504 plan, students who are special education, these would be students who would need an individualized education program for their, to access the curriculum, students who are limited English proficient, so these are students who are still learning English and not yet proficient in the English language, and then students who qualify for free and reduced meals. So again, we did show improvement in all of these from 2017. So this for ELA, and then the same data for math, three through eight, and Algebra I. Again, making improvements on all these categories from 2017. We also look at how we compare to other local education agencies in the state, so there's 24 of us in the state that we look at. You can see in 2017, from 2016 to 2017, we decreased in six out of the seven test codes. In 1718, we increased in six out of the seven, so our rank went up. I'd like to also draw your attention to our two highest performing tests would be the ELA 7 and ELA 8, where we were eighth in the state among those 24 agencies. For mathematics, we decreased or remained the same in six out of seven from 2016 to 2017. In 2017 to 2018, we increased in six out of the seven. And again, looking at math seven, our highest ranking would be ninth in the state out of those 24 local education agencies.
So there were five overarching strategies that we used to guide the decision-making and the planning that helped put the instructional needs of students first. Dr. Michael consistently encouraged attendance at professional development, often attending himself, to help support the implementation of the essential curriculum. The essential curriculum was initially created by teachers and a group of supervisors and content specialists, and school leadership teams then strategically worked with professional development, sending their teachers and then inviting our teams out to make sure that they had a deep understanding of the standards and how to implement them. School teams also created school improvement plans last year to guide strategic results for them. They analyzed their own data and then selected strategies appropriate for each school. It is important to note that one of the strategies listed here will have long-lasting impact, even though we didn't see anything in the test results that were just shared with you today, but Dr. Michael and the board's vision for early learning and expanding access to our pre-kindergarten to help prepare more of our youngest learners for a great start to school. The intense focus on content-based workshops increased attendance and drove the need for continued follow-up support for teachers. We increased the number of teachers actually attending and then coming back to follow-up workshops to continue deepening their understanding and learning from one another. Teachers actively participated, both in person and online, in discussing the rigor of the standards as well as the outcomes and the appropriate integration of technology to support student learning. According to Dr. Dickey, who spoke to our administrators this summer, he said, "School leaders must know content as well. Teachers have very little respect for school leaders who do not lead instructionally, and they should." School leaders should have an unrelenting focus in the content and student access to that content. So our monthly council meetings were held to increase the content knowledge of our administrators and support them as they supported teachers. This year, our focus continues to be on providing excellent initial instruction in every classroom for every student. Dr. Michael and the board continue to support the addition of resources aligned to the curriculum. New for this year are resources for English Language Arts, grades six through 11, and we're working on 12 to bring that to you, middle school science, and elementary mathematics. Having these aligned resources reduces the amount of time needed by teachers to search for instructional materials and ideas, and it provides one place for teachers to go for support as they're planning instruction. The Comprehensive Literacy Plan brings additional resources and financial support to help us showcase our model teachers, to help develop excellent learning plans, and to assist teachers with progress monitoring and making those instructional adjustments to meet the needs of our diverse student population. Dr. Michael has set the expectation for 90 minutes of mathematics at the elementary level, and this opening week of professional development provided a model and additional guidance on how that time might look effectively to support deep understanding of conceptual mathematics for our students. The PreVee Learn assessments have been aligned to the curriculum based on feedback from teachers for use by teachers in determining student progress towards these outcomes. Principals have identified one person to be the conduit for all mathematics information and professional development, allowing our content specialists to continue to develop more mathematics leaders so that we can continue to support teachers in a more broad way. Finally, additional resources were purchased for Algebra I and, last year, and we continue to provide support for strategic use of Discovery Tech Book. This year, administrators, supervisors, teachers, and teacher leaders will benefit from a focus on coaching that is new. We're developing that culture that we're all continually growing and learning, and that seeking and providing feedback routinely to each other can help us move forward together. And with that, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer, and I have a whole team ready.
Thank you both.
I'll have a question. And I hate to ask this because it's such great, it's such great news, but of course, I zero in on the grade eight math. Just theories there on why we're not quite getting the blue?
Oh, well, one of it is that we pull out our top students, so it's only 60% of our students. So these would be the students that are not taking algebra. And when we look at the state, the state average is only 15.9% meeting expectations. There are no blue. There's no students exceeding expectations, because generally, if they're exceeding expectations, then we put them into algebra so that they're accelerated.
Okay, that makes sense. I don't have any questions. Go ahead.
Well, just obviously, we're not satisfied with 14% of our eighth-grade students learning. I just think, you know, the challenge of eighth-grade math is not the eighth-grade math of 20 years ago. It's a rigorous math course, and we just have to help our students be successful in that course, as well as those that are in algebra. But it's a good observation.
Yeah, we definitely expanded the number. What I was most pleased about is, you know, you look at previous years where there... What I was most pleased about is, you know, you look at previous years where you want to see if you're following a class that just happens to do better and happens to be, but the fact that we've made improvements at every grade level is just extraordinary. So it obviously shows that the hard work is paying off. Congratulations to all.
Mr. Stalfer.
Well, first of all, I'll preface my question to you by saying, I'm very pleased to see these results, but one individual, after seeing the newspaper article on these things, said to me, "I guess teaching to the test is paying off." I just smiled. How would you respond to that if someone said that to you?
I can absolutely respond to that, because what the teachers built was not a focus on a single test or a single grade. What they did was look at all of the standards for all of the content areas and decide, "What do we want in Washington County for our students? What do we want them to be able to do by themselves independently by the time they leave us?" And it included standards. It also included creativity and curiosity, which were part of the board's vision. And then they backwards mapped for each grade level the standards. They created a wonderful framework for us to operate in, and the goal never was a single test. The goal is that by the time they leave us, they have a really rich skill set that will serve them well, whichever they should choose, trade school, military, college, or directly into a career. So I think it's not a single focus on a test, because you can't predict what's going to be on a test. And I think we've learned over our years in Maryland that having too narrow of a target, one year we focused a little bit on literature, and the test is heavy on narrative or on informational. So it's, we would prefer to make sure that our students are ready regardless of what's on that test. We're confident that even if the test changes, as long as the standards stay the same, our kids will be prepared.
Thank you.
I would probably encourage the person to look on the Park website or on the state website at some of the questions. The very nature of the questions require, particularly in Language Arts, you know, the ability to read complex text and then write about it. It's not something you can prep or just have a sole answer for or something like that. So I think by just looking at the nature of this test, it's very different than anything we've had in the past. So there might be some advantage to test prep or test familiarity, it's just not the nature of this test.
Free and reduced meals, I was really pleased with those numbers. Did you say that we saw improvements there?
Yes, we saw improvements in both math and ELA for students that are qualified for free and reduced meals.
Yeah, I just wanted to go on the record to say, I'm happy with all those numbers, but I always zero in on students that have extra challenges at home, especially with income. And so I'm just really pleased with that number. To see the red so low there, that's fantastic.
Well, I am quite pleased to see that our numbers of students who are meeting and exceeding are increasing. And I think that's a testament to the fine work that's being done in our schools. And my concern is for those who are approaching and who have partially met those standards and who have not yet met those folks who are in the red. So if you could tell us perhaps what kind of interventions, what are we doing for those students that are not where we want them to be? And I don't know if you want to call up some of your folks if they want to talk about interventions or the good things that are happening to support those students that...
Well, and I'd like to point out that when you look across the different grade levels, the number of our students who are in that red, in that not yet met expectations, though we didn't point it out because we had a lot of good things to say about those who are meeting and exceeding expectations, the number of students that are not yet meeting expectations is decreasing.
Yeah.
So before I ask Laura to share some of the specifics about the intervention plan and the intervention flow chart, we actually have three really big focus areas that have been consistent. And one is on excellent initial instruction, which means knowing your learners, knowing your content, and really being creative at delivering it so that students engage. The second is knowing your data and taking periodic snapshots and allowing students the opportunity to try some of these more challenging tasks independently and give them feedback. So really using the data and analyzing what we have in our assessment system. And then finally, being very strategic about what it is that we select for students to use should they, those two first things not work. So it's really a process of narrowing down and not giving up. We're hoping for mastery for all of our students.
So Laura?
Yes. So I can add that historically, we've had an approach of a research-based programmatic approach, not at our fault, but fault of legislation, saying you need to make sure that students, our response, is research-based, which led to a very programmatic response. What happened by default is that if a student struggled, we moved him into a program, and that child would stay in that program for an extended amount of time. The shift we're making now is that we're more purposeful in how we approach each child, just what Dr. Pugh said, through a series of assessments, getting to know your learners, but also making sure that the basic foundations of tier-one instruction, that any intervention program provided amplifies that, doesn't substitute, doesn't do any, but grows it so that those children are also reading. Oftentimes, intervention was provided during core instruction, and where we've asked that that not happen, so that it's done in addition. So we make sure, especially in the ELA area, that our students who are striving, learners, as we're calling them, they, everyone wants to thrive, so it's not so much looking at them as struggling, but that they have ample access and choice to quality books that they want to read, because oftentimes, they spend any additional time they have avoiding the task of reading. And the longer they go on avoiding the task, I'm certain that my counterparts in math will say they do the same thing, the energy it takes to avoid the task, if we can shift it and be most appropriate in how we target them through what we call a customized learning plan, where we design a plan based on their specific needs, a collection of evidence about what they need, align appropriate resources, that that brain power can actually be used to positively make gains in their learning, in an environment that the students feel successful. So we have a customized learning plan underway, an intervention flow chart that kind of leads school teams through making a decision. Is this the problem? If this is the problem, then ask this question. It's kind of a guide to teachers to say, when we're making these decisions, what questions guide us in making the decisions about a student's need?
Thank you.
And a lot of summer PD on exactly that topic.
No doubt.
There's a lot of success that's not demonstrated on these charts. I mean, we've looked at data, school by school, we've looked at data, teacher by teacher, class by class. You know, one of the success stories, I described a teacher at a very high-poverty school, first-year teacher, twenty students, thirty-five percent pass rate. So certainly not over the top pass rate that we'd want to brag about, but the number of ones and the number of twos, I think there were two ones and two twos, or something like that. But the teacher had fours and fives, and then had a large group of students at threes. This is a first-year teacher, high poverty, not a homogeneous group of top students at that school or anything like that, just a routine class at that school. And I'm very encouraged, someone that's participated in professional development, if that person can do it, I think a lot of people could do that. And I just think we have a lot of success stories right on the verge to happen. And again, people, I want to credit certainly our teachers, our ESP staff, our administrators, the team that's behind Peggy, her team, they've worked very hard, particularly over the last two summers, huge, huge amounts of professional development, people, I mean, writing feedback from professional development, just positive, positive feedback. Every one of the professional development opportunities, we have a survey, we ask teachers to fill out, and just overwhelming positive comments, and people taking time to write comments even is very encouraging. So this is how I'm going to use it back in my classroom, this is what I did for this last workshop. I'm watching my students read, I'm watching my students learn mathematics. It's just the type of comments we haven't seen in the past. So again, I'm very encouraged by what I'm seeing in that.
Mr. Stalfer.
Park's going out, right? Next year's the last year for it in the state of Maryland?
Right.
And so the state's going to replace it. What's the progress on the development of the new test? Anyone here know?
Well, I think they have a request for purchase out. I don't think they, and they're looking at vendors for who can design a test that meets the level of the standards that they have. I think they're looking very carefully, because the state board has given direction to make sure that there will be alignment between the tests. So as far as I know, no decisions have been made.
Did I hear you?
I'm hearing you correctly, that the goal is we have a new test, but we'll still be able to compare it to previous year's Park.
Right. And so I think it's a change in the vendor. So rather than calling our test after the vendor, you know, MISA or HSA or Park, they're going to call it the Maryland Comprehensive Assessment System in the subject areas, and that way you're not locked into a single vendor. So when you review products, as we all do, you can pick the best.
So the vendor for twenty-nineteen, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
The vendor for twenty-nineteen will continue to be Pearson, so it'll be Park for twenty-nineteen. And Dr. Salmon said just exactly what Peggy said last Friday at our exam meeting, that MCAP test coming up will still be the same standards, none of that will change, and probably the nature of the questions will be very similar. So we're not anticipating changing anything that we're doing. So I think it almost points to that test prep kind of concept. We don't plan to change anything we're doing, whatever tests they throw at us, we're going to have our students prepared to demonstrate their knowledge is really what we're doing.
Dr. Pugh, I just want to make sure that I understood what you said. They're looking to find a test that will align with Park? Are they looking for something that will align with Park more than it will align with the standards?
So Park is aligned to the standards, so they want the new test to align to the standards, and they want to be able to have some continuity in looking at the results as best possible that the psychometristians or magicians can determine.
I would hope that it would be alignment with the standards first.
First, correct.
As opposed to...
What vendors are out there besides Pearson with these things? Any?
We work with vendors such as Measured Progress. There's a couple of, the alternative assessments are done by DLM and MSAA, and those are some consortia. But there's a number of different test vendors out there. One of the problems that we have is we work with a lot of different vendors, and through MCAP, what they're trying to do is bring everyone under the umbrella of the same vendor so that it's easier on our staff, that they don't have to learn different systems also, so that the content is aligned, and then it's easier to actually administer the assessment. But there's a number of very large companies out that, well, not as large as Pearson, but there's a number that we work with that have online testing platforms that offer all of the accommodations and accessibility features that we've gotten used to through Pearson.
So Dr. Pugh, when there are people who are very critical of Park and very unhappy with Park, length of time that students spend taking Park exams, what is the likelihood that this next assessment will be different? I mean, for sure, we're assessing the same standards, but what is the likelihood that it's going to be any different than what we're experiencing with the current Park exam?
So I think you've seen some changes in that already in terms of the length of time. There've been assessment committee recommendations for each district about what assessment should be, what purpose they serve. But ultimately, the blueprint of a test has to have integrity for what it's testing, so there have to be enough items on something to say that the student actually knows it. And then there has to be the idea of time. We don't want to have excessive time doing a summative assessment. So we're hopeful that they stick within the same timeframe. I could probably get back to you and say what's actually in the request for purchase. There's probably more specific information there.
I think they're anticipating the time to be a little bit shorter. So I don't know if that's part of the RFP, or whether that's just something I've heard.
What they're also trying to do is create computer adaptive tests so that the test can adjust and get a score more quickly for the student, sort of like we had with the MAP is the most one that we're familiar with. So if you have enough items that you can measure the child's proficiency in three questions rather than in four, that computer adaptive piece will help us to do that more quickly.
Just a couple of things.
You just said something about the amount of time for the assessments. What, that it came down a little bit last year, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
How do you think that impacted scores? I mean, was there any?
Park time didn't change. But park time, park time did decrease, so the unit time decreased. But I, it's possible that the students, by having a shorter assessment, were less fatigued, but I mean, I think a shorter assessment obviously didn't affect our kids' success.
I'm not saying it did. I'm just asking, you know, does it have an impact?
Well, did it have an advantage? I mean, if you look across the state, I think you'll, Washington County was, well, the only one who improved in both math and reading over the five percentage points that they call significant. So I don't know that it had that much of a benefit for our students over what it did for the rest of the state.
Secondly, what, what types of test or what tests are being taken in other states or other countries? I mean, how do we, how does Maryland, how can Maryland compare itself to other jurisdictions, not within the state or around the country, with the tests that we're giving? Is there any way?
The one that comes to mind for international would be the PISA, which is implemented by the economic organization, OECD, I forget it. But that's the most common one that's internationally, and when we look at how other schools do across the, internationally, they're looking at those assessments, which is math and reading at fourth and eighth grade. In terms of other states?
Well, it's smarter balance. I mean, that was the one that the majority of states went with when we went with, as Maryland was a Park state and Park consortium. Other states went with the bigger, with smarter balance. At the same time, now you are seeing more states create their own or fall back to some of the statewide assessment systems they've had. So it is, I think the intent was to compare across, not necessarily internationally, but it was benchmarked from some of those international tests. But I don't think we had, we're not there yet. I mean, I don't think we have comparability in, even PISA is a sampled test, so it's not perfect, and it's not a perfect alignment or measure of what our students know.
How about this, just out of curiosity? Did all of our kids take the Park exams on computer? All of them did? Because I've read articles about the differences between handwritten versus...
The only students that took the assessment on paper would be students who had some type of disability that required that they take it on paper, students that maybe had a vision impairment, or students that were on home and hospital assessment or home and hospital teaching. So that would be where there are students that are too ill to come to school, and so the teacher, the tutor, would take the assessment to the student's house and do it on paper for more ease than anything, because that way we didn't have to have all of the implements that were required for online testing. But I would say probably ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent of our students took on the iPads.
That'd been several years ago. I think it was a mix across the state, you know, like fifty-fifty as far as, you know, who was doing a paper and pencil test and who was on some type of computer test, but I think at this point, I think pretty much statewide.
Yeah.
It's, you know, ninety-nine...
The article that I read, I don't know where it was, but the article was a study that showed that there was a difference between taking it on an electronic iPad or a computer or whatever and doing it in paper. I mean, it was statistically significant, not, it wasn't a big deal, but it was statistically significant. So I was just curious if we had any kids doing that.
I can say, a couple of years ago, that was a mix across the state, but I think we probably had less than fifty kids test on paper.
Most districts are the same as we are in terms of, the only students that test on paper are students who cannot access on computer. There is no district-wide paper testing anymore.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, both. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
That's the end of my report. Other than again, just thanking staff and students for a good first day, with the exception of the heat and a few air conditioning issues here and there, a room or two, I think in general, we had a really, really positive opening day. So thank you again to all of our staff and students for making a successful day. We look forward to it. We look forward to tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to personnel action. Dr. Bishop.
Good evening, elected board members. Superintendent Michael, this afternoon, in closed session, we discussed changes and reviewed those recommendations, so at this time, I'm asking for your approval of tonight's personnel actions.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Is there a motion?
President moved to accept the personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any questions, any discussion? Okay, we'll move to the vote. The vote is on approving personnel actions as presented earlier today in closed session. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, seven to zero. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Okay, we'll move on to reports to the board, board member committee reports. Mr. Mackley, would you like to begin? Do you have anything? Nothing yet?
Nothing yet.
Do you have a date yet for your first assembly?
Yes, I have one. I can't remember it off the top of my head, but there is one.
There is one planned. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Murray.
Yes, the Education Committee will be meeting on September 25th at, I believe, 10:30 in the morning in the board conference room.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bickford.
The Finance Committee met last Monday to go over the budget, quarterly budget adjustments. We have not planned our next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gassar.
Thank you. Facilities will be meeting next Tuesday, which is a different date than we normally meet, so that would be the 11th of September at 8 o'clock on the third floor conference room.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
Policy Committee met on August 28th, where we revised the policy on sunscreen use, which passed on first read earlier this evening. Then each member had been assigned a section of our policy book that had not been updated for some time, and we discussed the analysis of each section, and we decided that we would begin updating any policies from those sections that are related to safety of students in schools. So we'll be pulling those items out first and then assessing what category we will go to the next or what process we'll use from there. But these are the last three sections of the policy book that need to be gone over and updated. So it's been a long process, but it's coming finally towards an ending.
Do you have a date for the next meeting or...?
Oh, yes. Our next meeting is scheduled for September the 18th. We will be meeting prior to our regular board meetings from 12:30 to 1:30.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Ridenhour?
We met last Tuesday. We will be meeting, well, we have no tentative date for future meeting.
Okay. Okay, our next agenda item under miscellaneous business is consideration of future agenda items. We have a future agenda item list that was included in our weekly packet. We have several things included there, lots of reports to the board, student achievement, advanced placement in international baccalaureate data, discipline in school suspension and out-of-school suspension, a report on Tech High's Innovation Center. We'll have a master plan update in October. More on student achievement, ACT and SAT data in October. Also in October, we'll be updated on what's been happening with our new teachers. Some information in October on the financial audit and the single audit. November, we have a report on the youth apprenticeship program. And another important item is an update on the progress being made with the construction of the BOE component of the urban improvement project. That's scheduled for our meeting in November, November 13th. So we have a lot ahead of us. If you have any suggestions for items that you would like to see on the agenda, please let a member of the agenda planning committee know, Mr. Stalfer, myself, or Dr. Michael. There was something, something came up earlier today.
Guidance counselors.
Oh, yes, it is a desire to have... Something, a report about counseling.
Yeah, and I guess basically the state of, the current state of what the guidance counselor's role is and challenges and successes.
Okay, so that's something that we can certainly look at. I think Dr. Bishop has us planned out till this time next year on our 12-month, 12-month calendar, so I'm sure we can find a spot to fit in a report on counseling as it is happening currently in Washington County public schools. All right, we'll move on to board member comments. Mr. Ridenhour, would you like to begin down there, the same thing?
Really nothing, except there was, Dr. Michael made a comment about the success of a first-year teacher, and it made me think a little bit that we have to find a way to keep very highly successful teachers in a classroom. I think that, you know, we can teach and do professional development, and obviously we'll improve anybody that gets it, but there are always special teachers who can reach kids in a variety of different ways, as this person obviously did, and we need to find a way to keep them in a classroom forever.
Well, not forever, but at least until they're of retirement age.
They retire. Forever wouldn't be bad.
Mrs. Fisher?
Just hope that everyone had a really great first day of school and that the rest of the days of the school year continue that way.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Gassar?
Yes, I'd like to do a shout-out to Mike Embley and his team this summer with the meal machine. I was able to, in the last month, visit all those locations and speak to the staff that really enjoyed the program, and you could tell, they were having a good time, and they were just glad to be able to help their neighbors. So it was a very rewarding program. Mike does a great job, and I'd just like to applaud all those staff members who go out in the rain and in the heat and, you know, set up and tear down, and a couple of times they set up and tear down again in the same day because they go to different locations because it was a very rainy season, and someone said they got pretty wet, but they did enjoy it, and you could definitely tell. So congratulations to that summer program, and I thank them very much for that.
Thank you. Mr. Stalfer?
Just wanted to do other remarks that have already been said about. Welcome back to everyone, the students and the teachers, and it's a very successful school year for everyone.
Okay. Anything? Nothing? Mrs. Murray?
I have two items. I attended two back-to-school nights, one at Pangborn and one at Paramount last week with the Washington County Public Schools Education Foundation, and they were giving out information about their Super Readers Program that these two schools will be piloting, and we were able to sign up some volunteers, so it was very exciting to be there. And also, I want to thank Salem Avenue Elementary for letting me spend the first morning of the first day in their kindergarten classrooms and letting me share the joy of the first day, so. No, I didn't get breakfast.
No, your breakfast's coming up.
Oh, that's right. Thank you, Peter. I will be a guest waiter.
Celebrity waiter.
Celebrity waiter. Celebrity waiter, I'm a celebrity, at the Children's Village breakfast, benefit breakfast this Friday at the Elks Club, along with Dr. Michael. So...
Who am I going to give my test to?
Thank you, Peter, for reminding me. And that's all I have to say.
Mr. Backer?
I just wanted to say, during our last public board meeting, I was down in Annapolis at the Maryland Association of Boards of Education for their student board member orientation, and I had a great time. It was a really great opportunity, good learning experience for me, so thank you.
Well, from what I hear, we've had a smooth opening to our new school year, and I'd like to thank everyone for their efforts going forward. We've talked about our scores and the progress that's being made, and I know that that progress is a result of teachers who are dedicated, prepared, teach and offer quality lessons every day, good sound instruction every day. I really think that's what's key to the success. So I thank our teachers and our paraprofessionals for the support that they give, our teachers and their students, and I thank all of our ESPs for the work that they do for our system. And when we can make many choices in our day, I hope we choose to be kind as one of those choices that we make. So thank you, and we'll adjourn.